Stand, I'll lead the parade and remain standing for the indication from Mr. Dewayne Hicks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Hey, Lord, we come before you tonight to thank you for the opportunity, the blessing of living in this great country, this great town. And God, we come before you to seek wisdom, discernment, especially for our leadership, and pray that you would give them clarity and help them to have the right questions and seek answers. God, thank you for being the ultimate source of wisdom, and I pray that we will come before you always with grateful hearts for who you are and what you've done. In Jesus' name, we come before you. Amen.
At this time, it's a section of citizens' comments. I've been kind of cowed on the carpet a little bit on my leniency on time. I will not start the time until you get through stating your name and your address. I've still reserved the right for leniency if somebody from the council addresses whoever the speaker is to allow a little more time. Other than that, though, please try to keep your comments within three minutes. Who was the official timekeeper?
You got the timer?
Thank you, Jim. Like I said, we won't start until after the address name. We'll kick it off then.
My name is Brigadier General Barry Dalton, and I live at 150 Tony Drive, Carrollton, 30117, which is just outside the city limits. Four months ago, I came before this body and made an offer of several thousand dollars' worth of garden railroad and model village equipment to be utilized by the city anywhere it could indoors for the, where it could be set up for the enjoyment of the population. The Times Georgian happened to be here at that meeting. They reported it, and it got an awful lot of public notice. And two months ago, I came before this body and reminded them of my previous presentation. Now, I'm getting a little impatient, to be quite honest, and I now give you 25 days from today to give me a response because until now, I have not had such a courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Nellie Duke. I don't think any of you know me. I moved to Carrollton in 1950, and then I moved back in 1964, and I've lived in five different places. But anyway, I'm right here right now. The reason that I'm here, I went, Nellie Duke.
And address?
Oh, 1624 Nutt Road. I don't live in the city anymore. I was trying not to tell you about that. The reason that I'm here, I went to the historical meeting the other night, and you know, I have railroad background. My husband worked for many years for the Central Georgia, the Southern and Norfolk Southern Railroads. And I went in there, and I looked, and I was shocked because back when we first acquired that property, I went all the way to Norfolk, Virginia to talk to the Norfolk Southern Railway to help to acquire the property. And there were provisions within the agreement that said it had to be used in certain ways. I was shocked to find that, and where they're set my pot-bellin stove that I had loaned to the depot in the middle of what has now become offices. That is not how that depot was supposed to be used. That was supposed to be display and exhibit space. Do you know what room I'm talking about? And if you know the other room, the one where we have meetings and such, most of the memorabilia in there belongs to us. I gave it on permanent loan, and I had an agreement that it would be used for the purposes it was intended. But the point I'm here to make is that back when the railroad gave us that property, or literally gave it to us, I think it paid a dollar, if you'll go back and look at all the documents, you will see that that space is supposed to be used like a museum or exhibit space, that kind of thing, not administrative offices. And when we went in the front door, and there where my husband's desk used to be with piles of file cabinets, all sorts of things, just sitting there. That's not supposed to be there either. Then I went in the other room where the pot-bellin stove was, and there were at least three desks and file cabinets and all this office equipment. That is not how that room was supposed to be used. If necessary, I'll come get my stove back because I have it in writing that you said that you would use it in the way it was supposed to be used, and the moment it stopped, I would get it back. So I'm just giving you fair warning. If that continues, and that space is not used like a museum for exhibit of art or memorabilia, railroad memorabilia and that kind of thing. If you remember, I also negotiated with Norfolk Southern, got me in trouble with people over in Cobb County because I helped Norfolk Southern get some land over there that they wanted in exchange for the depot here. You noticed that Eddie Truitt and I are wearing our Friends at the Depot shirts tonight. Her husband was head of the Friends at the Depot, and she's here with me. We are appalled at what's happening. We're asking that you reconsider, that you go back to, I know what's happened. Most of you have come along after that. You didn't realize that you had that agreement. Is that right? So now, if you will reconsider, and I don't know what you're going to do with it, but get that stuff out of there, and let's use it in the manner in which it was intended. I would be so happy. And my husband, and Eddie's husband are watching from up there. They said, "Come here and say this," and I'm just, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
You're not surprised that I used all of it, are you?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I ask, please, what, could you remind us of what we're using that space for? The display and museum space?
Yeah, there's a, the Main Street office is down there, and the Main Street assistant and the people that maintain the depot are there. So I think there's three people that are in office there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Lindsay Fow. I'm the executive director for Keep Carroll Beautiful, and I wanted to come before you today. Oh, our address is 60, my personal address or work address? It's 108 Robert Hendricks Drive, Carrollton 30117. I wanted to come before you today to introduce myself for one, it's been a change in leadership at Keep Carroll Beautiful about a year and a half ago, and I wanted to introduce myself. But I also wanted to be given the opportunity to be put on the agenda for a city council meeting to give a presentation about everything that Keep Carroll Beautiful is doing in the community. We have a lot of upcoming events and initiatives that we've been working on, and I think it's good for all of you to know what we have. I also met with Gerald Byrd and Kent Johnston at the Community Garden recently, and I'd really love to find more ways that we can partner with the City of Carrollton. And I just wanted to thank all of the city council members for all of their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name's Greg Walker. I live at 843 Bethesda Church Road in Carrollton. I'm here to speak on behalf of our dealership, Walker Cadillac Buick GMC. And I want to personally thank Tim and Erica for meeting with me a couple of different times, actually, about my occupational tax certificate renewal. I just want to go on record of saying that I'm still not necessarily in agreement with, with what's been told and how to properly fill out the form. There seems to be some ambiguity there that I'm still not real certain about the proper method to fill this out, but they have been very helpful in talking with me. One concern I want to note, and I'm going to address this to Rory. Rory, on your, on the city's website, we pulled a phone number of 678-829-7679, is that correct? I left you a message since you're my ward representative to give me a call back because I was so concerned about this, and have yet to receive a call. Asked you to come to the meeting that I'd scheduled with Tim and Erica. Still hadn't received a call, and that kind of bothers me a little bit. That's all I, all I got to say.
I'd like to say one thing about that. I appreciate you do, you reaching out to me about the occupational tax. I believe you left me a voicemail the day before your meeting with Tim and Erica. I spoke with both Tim and Erica the day of that meeting, and I was unable to attend. I think it was that, it was the, it was the day before, and I was unable to shift my schedule around. I apologize for not reaching back out to you. After speaking with city staff, they, it was conveyed that your concerns had been heard, and they were working to address them. I believe that they still are and continuing to meet with you, and I'd be happy to meet with you directly. But again, I apologize for not calling you back directly, but I would be happy to do so.
Anyone else?
Alan Gaston, 403 Shady Valley Drive, Carrollton. You may have seen the last month of, I've been working on the bypass at the corner of 166 and Bankhead Highway of cutting all those trees down. And I've had two billboards in that area that have been covered up with trees for over eight years. We passed a law that you, enabled you to be able to cut trees on the right-of-way. And the trees that we're cutting, every tree that I cut, I have to purchase every tree. So, and all that money goes in the roadside enhancement beautification council. So it's cost me over $20,000. It's gone into that, that fund. That fund, that money's used to beautify cities, and each city can apply for the grant to be able to use this money that billboards use to cut down these trees. The, if you'll notice the Carroll County, Welcome Carroll County, they've put the signs up every entrance into Carrollton, and all the beautification around those signs was paid by this money. And then also, at the intersection 61 and 78 in Villa Rica, all that beautification was done through this money. And Temple has done the same thing. I'd like for this money to stay in Carrollton. I sit on that, that committee, so if someone in Carrollton would like to work with me on that, you can apply for these grants, and I can help them in getting this money because the most you can apply for is $50,000. But, you know, $50,000 can go a long ways with, you know, some shrubs and stuff. Thank you.
Is that money only to be used on highways, the beautification of highways? Is that what you're, you're saying?
Trees, highways, any roadways can be used like a job or somewhere, but it can be used, any, any road.
Like to purchase, purchase trees and create curb and gutter and things like that? Is that what you mean by beautification?
Right. And you just have to be willing to maintain it.
Yeah. I'm interested. Thank you, Alan.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Call me, or I'll call you, however you want to do it.
Anyone else?
My name is Bruce Brewer, 604 Cedar Street in Carrollton, Georgia, 30117. I'm here speaking on behalf of the small business, particularly my daughter's business of the Squire Shop in Brewer's Lantern. We just had some concerns as I'm filling out this occupational tax. It seems to me as a small business that we are...
Jim, can you get the mic for him a little backhand? I'm sorry.
Okay, is that better? Should I start over? Anyway, I'm here to just kind of register my concern on the occupational tax. And it's, it seems to me that businesses are taxed a great deal. My daughter is on the Squire Shop and Brewer's Lantern, which are both here in Carrollton. And so I just, we appreciate this gentleman working with it, and I could go on, but I'm not. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Item number five, minutes from the January 8th, 2018, and February 2nd, 2018. Need approval.
I think a motion to approve, if you can, for January 2nd and February 2nd.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Takes us down to item number six, mayor and council announcements. You want to go, Joe?
Yes, please. First of all, I would like to thank the city departments and the city council for participating in the third annual budget retreat, which took place this past weekend in Pine Mountain, Georgia. I wasn't feeling 100% that day, and I'm still not feeling 100%, but I was able to go home and weigh some of the things that we discussed and some discussed, and some of the concerns that I have as not only a councilman of this body before you, but a citizen of this town. And I told the council that day, too, that I'm, and I'm going to be a little bit personal, if you don't mind, I'm not interested in being anybody's friend. I'm not interested in fraternizing with anybody up here or joining any groups or clubs with you. My only interest is to serve the people of this town to the best of my ability every single day. So I came, came up with a list of things that I observed, and some things that we were supposed to be working on. Mrs. Duke, I'm going to have to take my hat off to you. It's our fault for dropping the ball on, not only that, but several other things that we made promises about that we have to be in the business of keeping, all right? The first one, and I'm not going to be popular with some of the people up here after I say some of the things that I'm going to say, but again, my interest lies outside of these four walls and with the citizens of this town. The first thing I'd like to address is the lack of diversity in key positions in hiring here. It should reflect our population, and it does not. This is something that I talked about February 2017 in hopes that we would do, that we would improve on that matter. This is in reference to department heads as addressed by me February 2017. I would also like to ask that we eliminate favoritism and hiring of our friends. Mike Green, is he here? Mike, you know, the only friends that I've gotten a job here would be somebody hanging on the back of a, of a trash truck, or a temporary worker cleaning up the graveyards or something to that effect. But I've not had any of my friends hired in almost the 20 years that I've been here in any key positions at City Hall, and I don't think it's fair that some of us are getting to do that because everybody's not getting a fair chance. Also, I'd like to ask the city to increase actions to address the noise ordinance on the west side. I said to them the other day that I feel like throwing in the hat on that, and I've done all I can do, but now I think it's time to step up actions by staff and everyone else involved. Also, and my neighbors will be very proud that I mentioned that today. I would also like to address the unequal approach to addressing our corridors. I ask that they be dressed, addressed all at once, dividing the first available funds to address them. Eliminate non-essential administrative positions in city manager's office to save money, and don't create new ones. Use the savings to make infrastructure improvements to our city. Eliminate costs by using in-house talent such as, or as much as possible, and that includes any council member who's willing to volunteer their talents and gifts. Review the city attorney's contract and determine if pending litigations, which involve city attorney's family, are grounds for terminating his contract. Hire at-will attorneys for individual projects to save money. Require city manager to dwell in the city limits of Carrollton in the future. Neighborhood stabilization program housing built on lots, we should build those on lots where we demolish homes for low-income families. Ensure the entire council has contributed to the master plan and not select council members. Host town hall meetings in each ward per my January 2015 agenda item for citizen review and input of the master plan. Host a city hall open house to showcase how tax dollars are spent and proposed projects, present those proposed projects to the public. We created an agenda item on January 2015 that was to make city staff create a community communique, which was to be mailed and/or emailed to all board members and council to ensure our goals are aligned, and everyone has input on what goes on at City Hall. I don't recall this ever being done. Also, eliminate some of the frat, fraternizing and personal relationships between council and staff. This will eliminate conflicts of interest and create a level playing field for all. Continue to recognize this is important to our citizens. Continue to recognize our citizens from all backgrounds who faithfully vote for us and selfishly, selflessly contribute to our city during council meetings. Also, send briefings from meetings held with two council members to ensure, or to the entire elected body to increase transparency. Let me read that last one one more time. Also, send briefings from meetings held with two council members to entire elected body to increase transparency. Thank you.
I just would like to remind the council again and, and department heads that I'm not going to be here for the April meeting next month, unfortunately. So, just one, and the general public, unfortunately, I'm not going to be here. And thank you, Mayor Protan, for all those suggestions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Gerald, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Was that 2015, 2016 on?
It should have been 16, I'm sorry. That's when y'all first came on board, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it was two, correction, it's 2016. Thank you. Thank you for the correction, Mayor Hanzur.
I wasn't trying to pick on you, I was just...
Oh, no, no, no. As I was reading that, I was like, wait, was it 15 or 16? You're correct.
I wasn't here in 15, so...
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm sorry I didn't get to make the retreat this past weekend with y'all. I had a wedding and some other things going on. I understand it was a good meeting, quick, to the point, and sorry I missed it, and look forward to it for next year.
I'd like to thank city staff and the council for a productive conversation that we had in Pine Mountain. I think budget retreats are extremely important to really walk through departmental priorities and look at capital projects around the city. What we were able to do is have a very productive meeting and look through what we've been doing in the past year and really plan forward in the years to come. So thank Libby for organizing a lot of that, and the council for very good discussion on that. I would like to thank the comp plan, folks that are organizing that. Erica, I know you've been a big part of that. The first meeting was last Thursday, which was a very good discussion, which is open to everybody to come to. We, I'd say there was about 30, 40 people, maybe, in that meeting, and it was a very good discussion in terms of planning and just getting input from the community of what they'd like to see. I believe the next one is on Thurs, this coming Thursday, and...
Harvey Lavender Center.
At the Harvey Lavender Center. At 6:00 PM, I'd like to see as many people there as possible. It's very important to get public input from all areas of our community to make sure that we are planning for the future. And just thank you for organizing that. That's it.
Erica, remind me where the Harvey Lavender Center is.
Harvey Lavender.
It's the former West Carrollton Recreation Center.
Yeah, it's the West Carrollton Recreation Center. It's at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry. I should have known that.
Just want to thank everybody for all your hard work on the budget retreat. It's the time of year that we put our budget together. There's a lot, weeks and weeks and months of work in that, and I appreciate everybody's hard work. Thank you.
All right, so gentlemen, gets us down to item number seven, approval of agenda items for consideration, or have a motion, or somebody wants to amend the agenda and add something, or?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as stated?
Have a motion and a second. I assume there's no discussion. Everybody in favor, please raise your hand. Five to zero. Libby?
Number one, Resolution 05218, amendments to the UDO to establish Lake Carroll Village overlay. Mr. Chet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a product of a lot of hard work by a lot of people, both on behalf of the city and a lot of citizen volunteers. But if you recall, back in September of 2016, the mayor and council created the Carrollton Corridor Development and Beautification Committee. And before I get started, I know there are several people that are on the committee here. I've had the pleasure of serving on the committee. City staff, Erica serves on the committee, two elected officials, Matt and Rory, Luke Wojcik is here, Michelle Morgan is here, Mike Patterson is here. I don't think I'm leaving out anybody, but there are members that, that have served on the committee and have put in a lot of volunteer time and effort on all of this. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Lacey, and she has done a lot of heavy lifting on this and, and been responsible for all of our meetings and our organization, and has just done a terrific job. So I'm very, very proud on a personal level to have been associated with these folks. And really, what you see tonight is the first of what I, I hope and expect will be a number of proposals coming out of this committee as it relates to the promotion of the beautification and development of the corridors leading into our city. The first corridor that we focused on was the Bankhead Highway Corridor. I'm going to go through the resolution at sort of the 10,000-foot level, hit the highlights, and then if y'all have questions for me or for staff, obviously stop us or, or ask us once I'm done. The first order of business, of course, was to create the overlay. We decided to name the overlay the Lake Carroll Village Overlay for a couple of reasons. One, because this area is so closely associated with Lake Carroll. Two, we really are trying to promote a village concept where there's a mixture of uses in the corridor, residential, commercial, and office. And I'll get to this in a little bit in a minute, but try to pull the buildings closer to the street so that you get that village feel, and at the same time, promote improvements to the streetscapes and also non-vehicular means of transportation, whether that, that be bicycle or walking or whatnot. So as we're moving through the proposed resolution, you'll see that the first step is just to create the overlay district on the map that's on the easel. Part of the resolution will be to adopt a new zoning map for the City of Carrollton that will create the overlay on the map. The next thing, again, as we're moving through the resolution, there's a couple of things that we did. This, this area is all currently zoned C2, which is one of our commercial designations. And so we, we made some changes. We started talking about some things that we wanted to see in the corridor. And then as we discussed it, there was, there were a couple of changes that we... And then as we discussed it, there was, there were a couple of changes that we wanted to see in C2 districts in other parts of the city, which included primarily adding a residential component to other commercial districts in the city or other C2 districts in the city. So, the first thing you see on the table of land uses is actually something that is a change that will be to C2 districts throughout the city. I'm just going to, again, hit some things that I think are highlights. In C2 zoning districts, automobile and RV sales are allowed. They will be, continue to be allowed in all C2 districts except for the overlay. All of the existing auto dealers and RV dealers in the overlay will continue to exist as lawful non-conforming uses, but moving forward, they would have to come before the mayor and council and get a special use permit. But that's only in the overlay, and that's the only change in that regard. Moving forward in terms of the big-ticket items, there are really two parts of this once you create the overlay. We needed to have design standards for the overlay, and then we also wanted to do some things as it relates to sign regulation in the overlay. The design standards are based primarily on the C2, design standards that we already have with some changes made, again, to try to create this village feel, this mixed-use feel, and to promote some of these non-vehicular means of transportation. One thing I'll point out, if you look at Table 4.0102E, which were setback requirements, this is the reason why circulated to you tonight is an updated resolution. At our last corridor meeting, we noticed that on the setback requirements, we had not previously made a change to those, and we needed to do that in order to promote bringing the buildings up to the street. So, it's really just sort of a, not a ministerial change, but a minor change just to make the setback requirements consistent with that goal. In terms of the design standards themselves, again, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. The idea is to have the buildings with their primary orientation towards the street. Parking lots would be to the side and to the rear of the buildings. There would be a limit on tenant spaces. No single tenant space could exceed 50,000 gross square feet, again, without getting a special use permit from the mayor and council. One of the things we focused a lot on was parking. We wanted to provide some flexibility when it comes to parking. The ordinance provides that you will provide for parking that's currently required, but if you can show a needs assessment that allows you to either reduce or increase the number of spaces, then that's allowed. But we really wanted to give property owners and developers some flexibility in terms of how much or frankly, how little parking they provided. Those are really the highlights in terms of the design standards. I mean, there are things that you would expect, like solid waste storage areas, outdoor storage and loading areas. We did some things regarding community spaces and lighting to try to make it more, again, pedestrian-friendly. The sign regulations are pretty straightforward. The idea really was to try to promote some creativity in the signage in the corridor. We discussed whether we wanted to go to monument-only signs. We decided at the end of the day that that's not exactly what we wanted to do. Again, we didn't want to constrain creativity and just say only monument signs, but we do encourage monument signs within the corridor. We did reduce the size of the signs within the corridor, both in terms of maximum area and maximum height. But in exchange for that, we created a number of different types of signs that would be allowed in the corridor. So, the traditional big monument sign is smaller, but you can have things like wall signs and awning signs and hanging signs and window signs, plaque signs, banner signs. Again, you can't have all of those things in one spot, but we wanted to give people an opportunity to be as creative as possible. So, the resolution before you tonight, in simplest terms, creates the corridor as indicated on the map. I do want to emphasize that by naming it the Lake Carroll Village Overlay, it doesn't change the names of the streets or anything. It's still Bankhead Highway, the street addresses and all that will remain the same. But we create the corridor and we have the design standards and the sign regulations that are set forth in the resolution. And that's the 10,000-foot level. I don't know if y'all have questions, comments for either me or staff, or for that matter, other members of the corridor committee.
I have a couple of questions. First one is, what are the requirements for serving on the corridor committee?
The, that was in the original resolution, the actual names of the corridor members were in the resolution that was adopted by the mayor and council.
Okay, but can you tell me what the requirements are to serve on that board?
Erica, you can help me if you want, but I don't know that there are any requirements. I think the goal was to have a mixture of people that were both stakeholders, meaning they either own property in the corridor or had business interest in the corridor or represented people who do, to have some elected officials on the corridor and then to have some city staffers on the corridor. I think that was the parameters.
Can we ask the, Erica, you can ask that in just a second if you don't mind, but could we ask the corridor members to stand at this time? If you're a member of the corridor committee? So, Eric, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, and actually, this is not a complete group. It was, there was a dozen others.
And I want them to know that I appreciate the work that they're doing. I'm no way showing an appreciation, so...
No, and I think Chuck's right. I think we were just trying to get kind of a cross-section of stakeholders, everybody from bankers to realtors, to property owners, to, you know, folks that are in the construction industry. We were just trying to get kind of a viewpoint from a lot of different angles, so...
Oh, Erica, or whomever, what's the shortest of our, could you name all the corridors that we're going to address and then maybe tell us what the shortest one is in length? Like in terms of, and when we calculate West Carrollton, let's not include the cemetery, unless y'all plan on making improvements to the cemetery. I know we talked about that before, but I don't know if that's included.
You mean length in like mileage?
Yes. Which one do you think is the shortest?
Well, I can tell you the, I don't know the answer to that just yet. We started at Bankhead, and, you know, we can talk about the length of Bankhead, but we haven't calculated kind of a beginning and endpoint for the other corridors just yet. We've started talking a little bit about Maple Street, and then we've also, like I said, at least at the staff level, we've started talking a little bit about Alabama Street because the Green Belt Spur is going to be running down Alabama Street. But I can't give you the distances of each of the corridors just yet.
I didn't hear that.
Maple Street is the shortest?
Maple Street is the shortest? If you're looking at city limits, I'm not talking about the whole highway, but the Okay, that's good.
We also have an engineer on the committee.
Is he the engineer?
Can I ask about the traffic study a little bit?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of people out that way that's approached me and were concerned about cutting it down to three lanes and with a turn lane in the middle, just one lane each What kind of volume of traffic do we have going out that way? Does anybody know?
What they did was the, we actually had a traffic engineer look at all that before we got too far down with the streetscape improvements. We wanted to make sure that we could basically withstand the capacity for vehicular traffic by the lane reduction over the, I think it's a twenty, is it a 20-year, Luke, in the analysis? Yeah, and that's what we wanted to do, to make sure we didn't create kind of a failing level of service by doing that. The traffic study fleshed out that we could indeed reduce those lanes without creating a, basically kind of a traffic problem, in layman's terms, and also accommodating those additional users, bike lanes and sidewalks, so...
So, we're not going to widen it any, we're just going to shrink it a little bit.
Right, a little bit of a road diet, and that'll help too with some of the traffic speeds. It did at least on Maple, and typically, not Maple, on Rome Street, where we reduced the width of the lane, the travel lanes. So, that should help some with some of the traffic speeds as well.
It's like some of the business owners out that way has approached me about, they thought it was going to be, going to strangle them out there, but y'all say it's not, so...
Yeah, and our traffic analysis says the same thing.
A good example of that is the section between Cedar Street and the square that already had a road diet. You're still, you're getting a lane reduction in that section. It is slightly different, lane reduction in this model, but what you see on that is safer pedestrian, safer automobile, and really just a nicer section of road than what was there previously.
Yeah, but what I'm hearing from the Cedar Street folks is that people are using Cedar Street instead of, they interrupt.
No, that's exactly right. That's definitely some concerns that I had heard too. And if you look at the design of this road, which isn't completed yet, I believe we're going to be looking at that in a couple of agenda items down, but one of the sections is right, right now, the right-hand turn lane onto Cedar Street is a right-only. So, a lot of the traffic that is going down, it just automatically gets dumped on there, and they're seeing more traffic over there. What this will do is actually remove that right-hand only turning lane, so it won't just automatically dump people over there, which we're hoping, I think traffic engineers can look at a lot of data and they can advise, and what they're advising is that we're going to see less traffic on Cedar Street, which will lower speeds because they're not automatically dumping over there as well.
Yeah, I'm just expressing concern.
Oh, yeah. I've heard them too.
While we have the committee in the room, if I may, to the committee and everyone serving, and to the council members on the committee as well, I would like to express my concern for Alabama Street and the need to make sure that Alabama Street is a priority and that it is treated with much respect, because those people have long been represented, sometimes without taxation. Don't we call that taxation without representation, Jim? Because I'm a taxpayer and I live over there and I pay pretty hearty, heavily, for my salary, so, and others are the same way. So, let's just not forget the people of Alabama Street. Let's make sure they're taken care of and treated equally. And I wouldn't have said this if it hadn't happened opposite to this in the past, you know, in the not-so-far-away past, you know? Also, Rory, is your brother on this committee? Oh, okay, and you're on the committee as well? Are you Rory's brother?
I am.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't think you can do anything to not be Rory's brother, unless you kill Rory. Right?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I just, these members of this committee, none of them are paid. They meet once a month at a minimum of two and a half hours. We have almost 100% attendance, which out of all the committees I've served on, it's remarkable, of 100 attent- 100% attendance. I served on the Board of Developmental Appeals before I was on city council, and we barely could get a quorum, because we didn't even have the people of Board of Developmental Appeals show up. And I know there are other committees and boards that they can't get quorum, so I'm just impressed with all these people that give their free time. These are all professionals. As Erica Stutter said, they have a stake in the community, and so I don't want you to get some sort of impression that somehow these individuals being paid, they're not. They're giving their free time. And as to Bankhead, I'll say I don't represent Bankhead, but it is a major corridor. It's one of the major roads that people come, when they come to Carrollton. That's one of the roads that they come down to. So, that's why I want a Bankhead to be addressed first. So, if you're upset and you feel like Alabama Street should have been addressed first, well, you can blame me, because I was the biggest proponent, even though I liked Maple Street, but I still said we need something on Bankhead. So, if you're, feel like you want to blame somebody, blame me.
Well, Councilmember Lane, to counter that, I believe you're putting words in my mouth. I never said that I thought Alabama Street should go first. I just want you to realize, and everyone on that committee, that I want Alabama Street treated equally to all the corridors. Because if you mention any of this to any of my constituents, that's the first thing they go, oh, they forgot about us again, they're going to forget about us again. So, I say, and I'm in no way trying to patronize, but again, I'm not even going to reinstate it, it's been said, or restate it, because it's been said. And I do respect those of you who serve on that committee. I do realize your volunteers were basically all volunteers up here just about, so thank And I'm not accusing y'all of neglecting, I'm just saying, don't neglect it. Is that clear? Can I?
Welcome, everybody. So, I just want you to know, when you get your lips, that we may have a certain role, but our roles are a little bit deeper.
Yeah. Right, now, I'm not accusing you of neglecting it. I'm just saying, just make sure that you don't. That's, that's all I'm saying. So, thank you all.
Where are we on this, Chuck?
I would ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak in support of or in opposition to it, because it's technically a change to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map.
I'm sorry. Can you come to the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Hey, Walt. Mike Bale. We're talking, I found it amusing just then that we got into different areas, and I was just jokingly telling Matt, well, can we talk about North Park Street? We haven't had any activity out there recently.
That's my word as well. Absolutely, I concur.
Don't forget about us either.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Brewer, Cedar Street. And I guess my question is, have there been some public forums on this or the areas that could be impacted?
Yes, we had a town hall, and there was over, in October, there was over 100 people that came, and I think the business owners were notified directly by staff, and it was put out in the paper, social media and things of that nature. But there was a really great turnout. And about how many people submitted their input on the survey that we also put out?
That's the one number I didn't think to collect tonight, but I want to say it was over 500. I'd have to go back and look just to verify. We also had a work session on this, planning commission, we've had all the other public input opportunities as well. It's part of the zoning hearings.
I think things just get a little hotter as they're about to hatch. You know what I mean? Rory, how, or Erica, how was that survey administered? Was it electronically or was it hard copy administered, above?
It was both. It was done through a Survey Monkey, and then we also had hard copies at city hall available for those that may not have internet.
Okay, and then how did people have access? How do we make that survey available to all segments and all walks of our population?
Well, it was a visual preference survey, and so it was a lot of photographs. The, there were some questions right at the end, but just like you said, social media, website, and then also hard copies available for those that may not have internet.
Mm-hmm. So, then if you don't have internet, you had to come to city hall to get a copy of the survey?
Correct.
Hmm, okay.
Anyone else? So, Chuck, we need to vote on this tonight?
Yes, sir. There, the motion would be to approve Resolution 05-2018, if that is the wishes of the mayor
Well, I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve Resolution 05-2018, amendment to UDO to establish the Lake Carroll Village overlay.
I'd like to second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, and we've had a lot of discussion, but is anyone-
I have one comment, I apologize.
Okay, I was going to say, does anybody else want to say anything else?
So, a lot of times, I'll just- Um, so, a lot of times I'll just make a comment off the top of my head, but because we've been planning this thing for two years, I figured I'd spend a few minutes to write something down. Um, as I look out and remember how far we've come in the last couple of years, I'm reminded of an old parable, um, and forgive me if I wax poetically for just a second. As the story goes, there's an old man who was planting a tree in his yard. A neighbor was walking by and he laughed. He said, "Old man, what are you doing? What good will it do for you to plant a tree now that you're so old? You won't live long enough to be able to sit under that tree and enjoy its shade or its fruit." The old man rose from his knees and looked at his neighbor and replied, "I am not planting the tree for me. I am planting the tree for those that come after me. Someday, they will come here during the heat of the day and be cooled by the shade of this tree. When I was a small child, I could eat fruit because those who came before me had planted trees. Am I not required to do the same for the next generation? As leaders, we are charged with planting the seeds of progress and change. The steadfast work of the Carrollton Corridor Development and Beautification Committee is coming to fruition in this shining example of revitalization. Carrollton is an altogether original community with so much to offer. This change to our design standards and this pledge to beautify Bankhead Highway signifies the voice of Carrollton and the positive trajectory in which we are headed. Our town will continue to be a leader in sustainable and deliberate development in the region. There is one major difference between this tree parable and what we're doing today. While we are planning for the future, we also get to see the fruits of our labor in a shorter period of time. I'm excited to have been a part of this progress, and I'm thankful for the hundreds of people that have spoken in favor of seeing this move forward."
I'd like to speak in favor. Obviously, I seconded this motion. I'd also like to speak in favor of it as well. I'm not, I don't have written comments like, um, Councilman Rojak did such a good job, Rory, but, um, the whole purpose of this is that we felt like the square is dynamic, has a lot of energy, and we want to extend that, that spirit of down, of being dynamic and bring it on down Bankhead. And, um, I feel like this is our first step. And one thing I hear about people talking about Carrollton is how progressive Carrollton is, and to me, this is just another sign of how progressive, forward-thinking we are. And I hope we're gonna get a unanimous vote today from the mayor and the city council in support of this, um, in this first step of revitalizing and beautifying Bankhead and one of the major corridors of Carrollton. And again, I thank all the members of the, of the, um, committee that are here tonight and for all your ideas and your attendance. Really appreciate it.
And before we vote, I would like to say that I don't want you to think I don't appreciate your work. To reiterate once more, but, uh, I just feel that everyone has not been reached, and, uh, we could do a whole lot better job of reaching all of our constituents, as many as possible, to ensure they have input in not only this, but other things we do here at City Hall as well. Thank you.
Hearing none. I assume we're ready to vote this time. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 05-218, UDO to establish Lake Carroll Village overlay, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Resolution 06-218. Tim, Bankhead Corridor Streetscape Improvement Design Authorization.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the heels of what you just passed, uh, we are looking at going forward with the design and the construction. Normally, uh, you do not have to authorize the design of the, of a project. This project is of a magnitude that we thought it best that you do a resolution and approve the design itself. This design will involve surveyors and engineers and traffic engineers and a litany of different people, landscape architects, uh, and, uh, the estimate on construction, uh, including the design and all contingencies is about $3.2 million. So again, the total design package could approach $200,000. Uh, so we wanted an affirmative vote out of the body before we go forward and start spending money, uh, in that amount. So, uh, I asked that you approve Resolution 06-2018 for the, uh, design of, uh, the Bankhead, uh, corridor project.
I have a need a motion and a second.
Make a motion that we approve and adopt Resolution 06-2018, the Bankhead Corridor Streetscape's Improvement Design Authorization.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of Resolution 06-218, Design Authorization, please raise your hand. All opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Resolution 07-218, Supporter Tanner Health Systems Certificate of Need. Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, we are very, very blessed with a, a great, uh, uh, health system in this area, Tanner Health Systems, and, uh, they continue to grow and expand and just, uh, make the area better and better. Uh, they are planning to, uh, add, uh, open-heart surgery to this area. Uh, as you also probably know that, uh, you can't just go out and build a hospital or, or make this sort of expansion to a medical center without state approval. There is a certificate of need required, and part of that certificate of need application is that the local government support, uh, the certificate with a resolution. And the resolution I'm asking you to pass is 07-2018, uh, which again supports, uh, Tanner Health Systems Certificate of Need for Open Heart Surgery. Thank you.
And this one doesn't cost us a dime, does it? Have a motion and a second.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 07-2018.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution 07-218, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Mr. Jim, 2006, 2007, City Audit Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our representatives from our city audit firm, Russian Company, are here to present the results of that Y2017 audit, and at this time, I will turn the podium over to Mr. George.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. I am here to present the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. Again, my name is Julie George. Also with me this evening is Kelly Palmer with our firm. Um, I first would just like to let you know what you've got in front of you. You've got a fairly thick bound report. That's the annual financial report itself. Then you've got a thinner bound document that's actually a copy of the audit presentation, which Libby also has on the screen. And that's what we're gonna be going through this evening. I would like to take a moment to thank Tim Grizzard and Jim Triplet and their staff. We worked with so many city staff during this audit. Probably no way I could name every one of them, uh, without leaving someone out, but they are all very helpful and we're very appreciative of their time and their efforts to assist during this process. Okay, uh, the first slide, um, discusses the audit opinion. You'll find that on pages one through three of the bound report. Just to point out a few things in that report, it addresses the city's responsibilities. Um, one key statement in that letter is that the financial statements are the responsibility of the City of Carrollton's management. It also addresses our responsibility as independent auditors, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of the city's financial statements. The city's financial statements are audited in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards, which are issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. The city's financial statements did receive an unmodified opinion. That's also referred to as a clean opinion. That means we did not make any modifications to the standard report. And that opinion would read that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the City of Carrollton, Georgia as of June 30, 2017, and expected changes in financial position and where applicable cash flows for the year that ended. Definitely the kind of report that you're looking for. On the next slide, we're gonna actually get into the financial statements themselves. The first financial statements in the report are what we call government-wide statements. We call them that because they address the city as a whole. They use the full accrual basis of accounting, and they do present governmental activities and business-type activities and component units in separate columns. And there are a few statements. The first statement is on pages 12 and 13 in the bound report, and this statement would be similar to a balance sheet in the private sector. If you're familiar with that terminology, it lists, um, presents the assets, liabilities, and residual net condition of the city. And on page 14 of the report, there is a statement of activities, and it presents the results of operations of the cities. So this is where you would see the city's revenues and expenses, and that would be comparable to a profit and loss statement, if you're familiar with that terminology in the private sector. They're gonna look very different, but again, assets and liabilities on the statement of net position and revenues and expenses on the statement of activities. On the next slide, um, we're gonna look at the city's net position over the last five fiscal years. Net position is broken down into a few different categories, the net investment capital assets, the restricted net position, and the unrestricted net position. Looking at the total net position column, you'll see that the city ended June 30, 17 with a total net position of $188 million. That is an increase over prior year. And if you look in that revenue and expense column, on the far right, you'll see that that increase was significantly larger than in prior years. And the primary factor contributing to that was that the city did recognize the capital contribution for the green belt in 2017. And that contribution was about $14.1 million.
Back to that slide. You're saying it's about 14 million. That still leaves, what, five roughly? Five million if you've not done the, included the green belt. Am I right?
Um, Eric and I will help, help on. You're talking about what the total green belt?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. I'm looking at-
The total 19.
Yes.
Yes. Um, the capital contribution of the 14 is the largest factor to that increase. The other factors contributing to that increase are activity from the general-
Okay.
-water and sanitation funds, which are addressed in later slides.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. You can address it. Okay.
But yeah, that's, um, the, a capital contribution in the governmental activities is only recognized on the statement of net position and the statement of activities. So that would be a difference here that you would not see in your general fund because it's not a cash contribution. It's a capital asset contribution. So that's why I addressed that only here. Okay, on the next slide, we're actually gonna get into the general fund, and here we're gonna look at the general fund's revenues and expenditures over the last five fiscal years. Your revenues are in blue, your expenditures are in green, and you will see that revenues, um, are up here as well. So the increase in these revenues is also included in the 19 million that you questioned on the previous slide. Just to let you know, a couple of things that would be in there, property and other taxes were up about $459,000. The city had significant insurance reimbursements this year. That would be about $467,000. And then also, there was an increase in the city's charge for services relative to a reimbursement of joint expenditures with water and the sanitation fund, and that's about $1.2 million. So these items in the general fund would also be included in the increase in that position on the previous slide, with the exception of charge for services because that is internal, and we do have a column eliminating that in the government-wide statements. Okay, sure. You'll also note that the expenditures in the general fund are up, and I wanted to address that. Um, much of the expenditure increase that you see here is related to the salary reimbursements from the general fund and the sanitation fund. In the prior year, the city allocated one-third of certain salaries to each fund, and during the budgeting process for June 30, 17, year-end, they changed that so that the entire salary would be reflected on the general fund, if, if that's where that position's home was. And then there would be a reimbursement for sanitation and water fund for their shared allocation of that. And the city made that change to provide more transparency. So you do see- ... an increase in expenditures and an increase in revenues, because a portion of those revenues are coming from the water fund and the sanitation fund. So if you were to look at the financial statements for the general fund, if you want to make the notation, there's a good bit of detail on these numbers on pages 76 through 81. You would see, for instance, if we took the finance department, you would see an increase in the salaries in the general fund, but that is because the entire finance department's salaries are now reflected in the general fund with a reimbursement coming over from water and sanitation versus the one-third split that we may have seen in the prior year. On the next slide, we're going to look at the general fund's fund balance over the last five fiscal years. The line graph, uh, the portion in blue. Yeah, there it is. Thank you. Uh, the blue line is the total fund balance, and the green line is the unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is the amount of fund balance that is available for spending that is not restricted for spending. And the city had over six months of unassigned fund balance, and I just wanted to comment that that is a healthy fund balance. The FFOA recommends a minimum fund balance of three months of expenditures, and we would say that healthy would be three or four months, and you're at six, so you're definitely in a healthy range in the general fund balance. Okay, on the next slide, we've got a pie chart to show you the general fund's revenues by source, and a detail of this would be on page 77. And the detail pages I'm giving you are actually the comparative general fund statements. So they're gonna have a comparison to prior year and also a comparison to the final budget. You'll notice that the larger slices of the pie, as you would probably expect, are property taxes, blood blocks and sales taxes, and charges for services. On the next slide, we've got a similar pie chart for the general fund. We just want to present the expenditures by function. You'll see that the largest expenditure categories are lease, fire, and poultry and recreation, making up a, a pretty good percentage of the city's expenditures. The detail for these numbers are on pages 78 through 81. Again, all those pages you would be able to see what makes up those numbers and also see a comparison from current budget and prior year. On the next slide, we're gonna look at the city's water and sewer fund, revenues and expenses over the last five years. We see an increase in revenues over the prior year, and that increase is primarily an increase in water sales and sewer sales. Expenditures compared to prior year were comparable. And the detail in prior year comparison for this is on page 102. And one thing I wanted to comment on this slide is the city's debt service coverage ratio. So, that is a model of supply, the debt service coverage ratio is 11.74, and that is a new rate. The debt service coverage ratio is a measure of cash flow available in a current debt obligation. And that is a very impressive debt coverage ratio. Just to give you some perspective, in each of the files, they're 1.05 remaining supply to the debt cover. And the city is at 11.74, and that is an increase over prior year as well. Okay. On the next slide, we have the sanitation fund, operating revenues and expenses over the last five fiscal years. Again, we do have an increase in revenues resulting from sanitation fees being up. We do have an increase in expenses here, and that is primarily related to the change in the indirect salary allocation that I mentioned earlier. And a detail of these numbers are on page 106. On the next slide, we have a report on pages 110 and 11. This is our report on internal controls and other matters. This is issued in accordance with government auditing standards. And this report describes the scope of our testing, the results of our testing, and also provides management's response. But it is not an opinion on internal control or compliance. On the next slide, we have another report on compliance and internal controls. This one is over major programs. This is on pages 112 and 13. This one relates to the city's spending of federal awards. And this report is issued in accordance with the Uniform Guidance, and it describes the scope of our testing of compliance requirements and internal controls over major programs and the results of that testing. We are required to express an opinion on the city's compliance with requirements, and our opinion is unmodified. Again, that means we're not making any modifications to the standard report. We do not provide an opinion on internal control, and this report is not intended to provide an opinion on internal control. Okay. The next slide, the next two slides actually are covering current and future reporting changes. Let me start with Gatsby 77. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but Gatsby 77 required the city to add a financial statement disclosure this year, it's in this report, to disclose its tax abatement agreements and the total property taxes that were abated during the year. And the city did implement that for June 30, 17, and that resulted in a new note disclosure. That's Note 17 on page 63. Gatsby 75 is coming up this next fiscal year. Gatsby 75 is related to accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. And this and the next couple to follow, we've already been in conversations with Jim and are planning the city's implementation of these standards and providing information and researching to make sure that we're all ahead of the game on these. And this statement is going to establish standards for recognizing and measuring liabilities, deferred inflows and outflows, and pension expense pertaining to other post-employment benefits. That would be your health insurance benefits that's available to your retirees. And it's going to make the accounting for this more consistent with the pension accounting standards. On the next slide, we've got Gatsby 87. Got a couple of years to go before this one is effective. We do expect it to be a significant standard. It is about leases, and we expect that the city would have to recognize certain lease assets and liabilities that were previously classified as operating leases. And again, we'll be looking at these types of things with Jim to determine how it may affect the city going forward. The next one is the Uniform Guidance Procurement Standards. Again, there's that term Uniform Guidance. That is relative to your federal awards. And it basically establishes minimum required procurement policies and threshold that you have to follow when you receive federal funding. And I know we've been in touch with Jim very recently on that one, that one's coming up soon, and provided some information, and we're actually looking to see what changes the city may have to make to its procurement policies to be in compliance with that change. Okay. The next slide is our contact information. If you have any questions, I'll obviously be glad to answer any at this time, but I know a lot of questions come up later, or questions may come up during the year that aren't even about this report or about something current. So, I just want you to know that we're available to all of you at any time. With any questions, please feel free to reach out. Our Carrollton office is just right down the road, so I'm available. And then Chris, who I think you've all met, he's available as well. So, are there any questions at this time or anything you would like to discuss further?
Julie, I appreciate all your hard work. I just want to make a couple of points, so-
Okay. Sure.
First off, just a reminder that before this administration, the audit was not published publicly. It wasn't presented to the public. It wasn't presented to the mayor and council in a public meeting. So, I appreciate you doing that. This is the third year in a row that this has been done. Again, a lot of changes were made in 2016 to just clean up, to be more transparent. And I'll give you a, for instance, it, before that time, all of the IT department was billed to the water fund because it could afford it, but it made no sense that they're billed there. So, now, they're billed to the general fund, and if we have to move money from the water fund to fund that, that's what we do, but you can clearly see the cost of the general fund. So, that's some of the issues that she was speaking of. I serve on the Carroll County Water Authority Board, and they have a very healthy financial situation also, but their debt coverage is probably two, which is excellent, and ours is almost 11 and a half.
Yeah.
Some of that is where we paid off some debt from 19, Jim was it about 1996, maybe?
Correct.
Paid that off in the last couple of years, and so that's showing that debt ratio even better. We are planning on borrowing some money for some large water and sanitation, water and sewer projects, and so you'll see that ratio drop back down, but it's still going to be an excellent ratio. So, I just, I consider this our report card and our most important report card, so I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I wanted to add one thing, if I can, to Mr. Lane's question. Your question on the 19 million, I just wanted to mention, there's not a comparative financial statement for the government wides, but the management's discussion and analysis does have a comparative of those. So, if you wanted to look more into the change over prior year and what else went into that 19, page eight would be very helpful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vehicle bid, street sweeper. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We currently operate two street sweepers that keep our roads very clean and our parking lots very clean. One was, is a 1990 unit, the, another is a 2007 unit. We want to retire that 1990 unit. There is a street sweeper on state contract, so we could have taken that number, not been required to obtain any other pricing, but we did get pricing from three other street sweepers and, but we would, and you, those prices are before you. Environmental Products of Florida won the state contract at $232,049. Environmental Products of Georgia is $217,800. Amric Equipment of Lexington, South Carolina is $215,450, and Waste Bilt is $209,550. We want to buy the Environmental Product Sweeper because it has one engine that runs all the hydraulics, so it's a much simpler and easier product to maintain. It does not have the auxiliary motor, so we think it is worth the slight increase of about $8,000. So, we're asking that you approve the purchase of item two, which is, again, the street sweeper for $217,800 from Environmental Products of Georgia, which is on Fulton Industrial Boulevard. We had $220,000 in the budget.
Can I have a motion and a second or is any discussion?
Mike Green is here if you'd like to look exactly how these trucks operate.
How move we make this purchase?
Have a motion and have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand to purchase item number two. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Richardson, equipment bid, water bar screen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is item six, is a replacement of bar screen equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. This is equipment that's been in service since 1988. There's been some replacements of some of the equipment in 2000, but this is equipment that runs 24/7. So, it's inevitable that wear will occur and an eventual replacement will be needed. So, a committee published an RFP, submitted it out there, received two submittals from two different companies. Price was very close. Evaluations Committee was selected to rate them based on cost, qualifications, and experience, detailed approach to work, warranties, and accessibility for maintenance. They were, like I say, very close. The low bidder at $1,352,000 was Willow Construction, and they had the highest score of 95.6. And the staff recommends that you award this bid to Willow Construction in that amount, $1,352,000 for replacement of bar screen equipment, and the funds are in the current budget year.
Anybody got any questions? For Tony? I do. What's that do?
It's actually the very preliminary treatment of the wastewater plant. You approved last year the replacement of the grit removal. This is prior to it. It removes all the sticks, rocks, and things that come down the sewer line, and we do get a lot of them.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to know.
Yes, sir. Be glad to show it to you.
Don't watch it run before lunch, is all I can say.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt equipment bid wastewater bar screen. Have a motion and have a second? Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ah.